I'll start the meeting here shortly. Um, I sent the, uh, city clerk on a mini errand. She'll be right back. No, I don't tell jokes. Well, none that would be appreciated here.
I'd be kicked out in no time at all.
Okay, let's call the Tuesday, May fourteenth, Andover City Council Meeting to order. Start off with roll call to my left, please.
Brian Shuan, council member.
Caroline Hale, council member.
Troy Tabor, council member.
Ben Lawrence, mayor.
Clark C.R. Nelson, council member.
Greg Schneider, council member.
Mike Warrington, council member.
Mike Keller, police chief.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Mike Roosevelt, deputy fire chief.
Jennifer McCosland, assistant city administrator.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney.
Les Mangas, director of Public Works.
Mark Detter, city administrator.
That's okay, nope.
Paula Bad, deputy city clerk.
All right, item three this evening is invocation. Uh, we have Pastor John Langley with East Point Baptist Church. Thank you for joining us.
Let's pray. Father, as we come before you, the one true and only God, we recognize your sovereignty and we bow before it. We ask you this evening that you will give and continue to give our council a heart that is bent on serving our community. We ask you that you will continue to bless them to look for the greater good, not just what is good. And I ask you, Father, that you would take each man and woman and give them the willingness to serve. We thank you for their service up till this day. We pray, Father, that they will continue to do so. May you bless this evening. May you bless those that are, uh, here to be heard and those that, uh, are going to be speaking. And we ask you for your blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Do you stand with us for the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I saw her walk in. All right. We'll move on to item number five, which is the public forum. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Nobody? All right. We'll close the public forum and move on to acceptance of the agenda. No additional items this evening?
The only thing is, we put in some letters of credit for the Prairie Creek addition this afternoon. So if, uh, anybody wants to look at those when we get down to that item.
Does the city attorney review those?
Yeah, I think Cam did, actually. The, uh, his legal.
City Attorney's Office?
Yep.
And they have already been updated.
I didn't want to speak for you.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second. Uh, motion by C.R., second by Mike, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven. I have a couple of proclamations here. We'll start off with, uh, National Police Week. Um, and Peace Officers, uh, Day, right? It's May fifteenth. Uh, it's important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their police department. Uh, this is a day and a week that we recognize, uh, the important role that you guys play in our community. Congratulations. You have a fine department. And, uh, would you like to add anything?
I just want to apologize. I have to take ownership. I forgot to have the officers that are working tonight to be here. So I don't have any officers in the crowd. And then, this is a busy time of year. A lot of my staff have musicals and baseball games. So I'm really the only one here from the police department, but thank you.
Well, you're making a sacrifice being here, so we appreciate that.
We appreciate the proclamation. Thank you.
Not a problem. The other one, um, is the subject of what I sent the city clerk at. For some reason, I had a bad copy of something, so I'm going to come back to item seven point two and move on to item number eight, which is the consent agenda. Items eight point one through eight point five.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda items eight point one through eight point five as presented.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Brian, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Back to item seven point two. Little series of appreciation proclamations we've had in May. Uh, I want to declare the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, Public Works Appreciation Week. Uh, for those who don't know what Public Works are, um, well, they do a lot. They take care of your streets. They take care of what happens when you flush the sewer, uh, flush the toilet. Um, they take care of the wonderful parks you're in. Um, and, uh, a lot of people don't know who they are and what they're doing and how they're doing it, but, uh, the beautification of Andover and, uh, maintaining the, like I said, the streets, parks, and utilities for the community in, in steadfast fashion. So I would like to show our appreciation for the Public Works, uh, the city of Andover, May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth. Rick, did you have anything to add?
Uh, no, other than that, we want to thank you and council for all you guys do for us, to empower us to do the jobs that we do do. I mean, sounds okay.
All right. We will move on down the agenda to item number nine. We have redevelopment district, or TIF.
Um, Mr. Mayor, as you recall, we've been working with this piece of property for quite some time now. We've actually had a developer's agreement pre- at the previous meeting approved, uh, stipulating certain, uh, things that the developer will have to do in association with this. But this is a tax increment, the first step in the tax increment financing process. Uh, we are designating this area as a, a TIF, uh, uh, district. And then we'll, um, have a protest period where the county and school district, uh, will have some, about thirty days to, uh, decide whether or not they want to have any, uh, objection to it. And that, that could stop the process. We're pretty confident right now that that won't happen. But that is part of the process. And I'll let the city attorney get into, uh, greater detail here in a second. I just want to remind everybody that, uh, this area has a, uh, new, uh, parkway, uh, going through, going through it. Landscape medians, uh, you know, going from Kellogg all the way to Central eventually. The first phase is going to Douglas here. We're looking at a mixed-use development, starting with residential at the north end of the, uh, development. Looks like up to a hundred and ninety, uh, what we call kind of zero lot line homes. Very unique, uh, in the Wichita area in terms of the development that, you know, we're looking forward to working with perfection builders on. And then I, Mr. Jerry Jones, Dr. Mike Lees, and Mr. Lance Beal are here tonight, and I think they have further plans for commercial. Well, I know they have further, further plans for commercial in the front part of this, what I, you know, they call them the more southern section of it. So we, uh, you know, are looking forward to this, but I think as the city attorney can explain, this is really the first step in the process. Um, and I, you know, if there's anything, any blanks you want to fill in there, please feel free.
No? No comment?
I'd be delighted to answer any questions. What this ordinance does is it identifies a district for redevelopment. And it creates the start of a mechanism whereby you'll be able to capture the property tax increment that will be created by the development in order to enhance the development and consider future projects. Tonight, we're not considering those projects. We're not considering their feasibility. We're not doing any of that. This is just step one, which is, is this district proper to be designated for such redevelopment? And as Mark pointed out, the statute allows other governmental entities to disagree. Um, but this is the first step for you to start that process. I'd be delighted to answer any questions you might have.
It's been a long time. Been working on this for three, four years. Long time, and, um, I'm ready, I'm ready to get this puppy started.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the ordinance making certain findings related to the redevelopment district and establishing such district within the city of Andover, Kansas.
Second. Motion by C.R., second by Troy, to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number ten. We have before a special use case. Two thousand nineteen dash zero one. Um, this is, uh, to allow a vehicle dealership business and services related to the operation of such a business. The B-five highway corridor mixed-use business district on property generally located at two twenty West Highway fifty-four. Before I proceed with this hearing, I'll ask the council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves because they have a particular bias or conflict of interest. All right. Uh, has the city clerk received any protest petitions?
We have not.
Not? All right. I will ask the council members if they all received planning commission meeting minutes of April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
We have.
Yes.
All right. I now call on the city zoning administrator to provide us with a report on the case and recommendation from the planning commission.
This case is really pretty simple, housekeeping. Uh, the property is out along Highway fifty-four. It's in the, the highway corridor district. But with the change in zoning regulations to the UDM, the car dealerships were made a special use. Not a problem had this thing been continually used, but it's lapsed for about a year now, so it lost its legal nonconformance. So this case simply just puts it on the record as a special use to allow a car dealership at this location. Planning commission has recommended unanimously to approve.
Mr. Mayor?
Caroline.
I move to adopt the planning commission recommendation for approval of special use case SU two thousand nineteen dash zero one and approve an ordinance allowing a vehicle dealership business and services related to the operation of such business as a special use in the B-five highway corridor mixed-use business district on property located at two twenty West Highway fifty-four in Andover, Kansas.
Second.
By Caroline, second by Brian, to approve special use case two thousand nineteen zero one by adopting the planning commission recommendation and approving the ordinance to allow such. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Hold on to item number eleven. This is, uh, rezoning case, um, for the present I-one industrial district to B-one office, office business district. Property generally located at two twenty-one East King Street. Would be in the industrial park. Um, before I proceed with this hearing, I'll ask the council if any of them intend to disqualify themselves or participating in this case because they have a conflict of interest. Has the city clerk received any protest petitions?
No protest petitions have been received.
All right. Now I'll ask the council members, another silly question, because y'all just said yes, but did you get your minutes from the April sixteenth planning commission meeting?
Yes.
I'll call the zoning administrator to give us a brief background report of the case and the planning commission's recommendation.
South Central Mental Health has purchased this lot and they intend to build a new office. And this property was zoned I-one with the former industrial park. If you remember right, there was seventy-five or eighty acres here north and east of this site that was the original Andover Industrial Park. Uh, the majority of that fifty-two or fifty-six acres, uh, was sold by the city to a private developer and our comprehensive plan reflects now that this use is, this area is more of a mixed-use area rather than a industrial area. And this, this zoning case reflects that and actually would provide a good buffer between the Crescent Lake subdivision and those more intense uses like the bus garage across the street to the north. Planning commission again has recommended approval of this case.
Can I ask? May I ask, uh, um, so Les, um, you were at that meeting, obviously?
I was not.
Yeah, okay. Mark, were you at the meeting? With this meeting?
Planning commission? I believe so. Now I have to jog my memory to go, go through it all, but...
Did we have anybody from Crescent Lake that was actually there that asked the questions about screening and...
Yeah, we had, we had a gentleman who, um, came and inquired. I can't remember. He must back up to the property.
He does, yeah.
And I think, uh, yes, his primary concern was the screening. Wanted to know about the actual use, and we try to be a little bit, we really can't get into that as much, but, uh, um, you know, in terms of what the actual business is, which we tried hard not to make that the, uh, focus of the zoning. Um, we did invite the gentleman to come to the site planning meeting, which was fortunate he didn't, because we still, we missed connections on that one. They have not been before site planning yet. But that will be discussed at the site planning meeting in June. Uh, GMLV is the architect, uh, working with us, so, uh, I work with, with the business, so...
Okay, well, so I, they reached out to me and, um, the request or the, the questions or hopes, I guess, would be that, um, trees, the tree lines there could stay if possible. Safety lighting, like that's the back of the design source right now, is pretty bright and shines right into the houses of the homes right behind them, and, and a hopes that that would be alleviated or not happen, um, with this new property. Um, and that was really, that's kind of it. It was...
I, I certainly would let Les comment more on the site planning, but the lighting for one person on that site planning committee is always a discussion in terms of making sure you're, you know, not being too intrusive on the neighbors. Uh, and then obviously screening is, and landscaping is usually discussed at those meetings in depth. Um, and the other, the other issue is, we do, we do look at drainage, you know, it's, if, we're usually following what a professional is submitting and, and, you know, if everything looks, uh, accurate according to our city engineer and our public works director, we're usually, usually on board with that, so...
Well, okay, that, the drainage piece is, is great to hear. I know that the corner, the very corner house, which I don't think this is going to have any effect on whatsoever, but there's a small creek almost that drains into, or it becomes after, from all the, the water that's on the land that's over there, hits the very corner lot in Crescent Lakes. And luckily, there's, there's already somewhat of a creek over there now, um, but hopefully this wouldn't cause any, you know...
So do you know if the, the corner commercial building there is causing any drainage issues?
No, it's not. It's, it's actually not a commercial building at all. It's the actual farmland or whatever lands to the, to the right on this image, all the way at the far end, um, home. So I don't think this would affect it anyway, but I know that that has been a concern is the drainage off of there and how it hits the corner lot, not these lots, but, anyway. So the question really was about screening and lighting. Obviously, the, their backyard's going to change, and that's to be expected long-term when you move into a place that backs up to a zoned industrial or business.
Sure. We have a site plan that will be discussed at the June Site Plan Committee meeting. The hedge row remains in place. The drainage is minimal, and the backside of the building is essentially a few windows and a lot of landscape.
Troy, I'm looking at the, uh, landscape plan at the end of, at the very end of this and the photometric, and the photometric hat shows zero at the tree line.
So they cut out all the trees?
I, I, I know you guys are interested in that, but I need to get us back on topic here. What you're talking about has absolutely zero to do with this rezoning request. It will go through the Site Plan Review Committee, and they'll discuss the merits that you're reviewing here tonight.
Okay. Well, when the site plan comes up, obviously, if I'm, I'm unable to make it, I'd appreciate it if, when he would represent the same, uh, issues that were brought up by me tonight for this. I'll try to make it.
And by Crescent Lake's person who...
Yeah.
...contacted you.
Yeah.
You have to remember, this is a downzoning request. There's a whole lot of other nasty things that could have gone in there, too.
Sure.
You're not doing you a little bit of favor by moving it down to business instead of industrial, then you would have had a real problem with the neighborhood.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt the planning commission recommendation for approval of zoning case Z two thousand nineteen dash zero two and approve an ordinance changing the zoning district classification from the existing I-one industrial district to B-one office business district on property located at two twenty-one East King Street, Andover, Kansas.
Second.
Motion by C.R., second by Caroline, to approve a zoning case two thousand nineteen dash zero two based on the planning commission's recommendation. Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Caroline.
Um, I was just going to comment that, yes, this is actually very much of a lessening of what could have been there. So, um, when you think about the noises that could be coming from something that would be more industrial, I think this will be a very quiet, good neighbor for that community. So I see it all as a positive change.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number twelve, Summerlin Planned Unit Development. This is zoning case two thousand nineteen dash zero three, right?
Yep.
All right. To establish a planned, uh, unit development of the Summerlin addition. Before I proceed with this hearing, I'll ask if any of the council members intend to disqualify themselves or voting on this case because they have a bias or conflict of interest? All right. Has the city clerk received any protest petition?
We have not received any protest petitions.
I'll ask the council members yet one more time if they've received the minutes of the April sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, planning commission meeting minutes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I'll call our zoning administrator to give us a brief back, brief background report of the case and recommendation of the planning commission.
This is a bit of a redevelopment. There's an existing single-family home out there on a little over ten acres along one fifty-ninth street that's bordered on the north by the Quell Crossing addition, on the east by the Kaywood addition, on the west by the Ranch addition in Sedgwick County. Staff feels this is a, a great infill where we, we take what is an underutilized ten acres of land and, and turn it into single-family housing like, uh, all of its adjacent neighbors. It's a bit of a change in what we typically see because it has those constraints of being an infill. There are no roads from any of the other subdivisions that extend into this track. So they've made a loop. Uh, it has provisions in the PUD for narrower streets to make that a one-way loop around with some amenities in, in the center where everyone in the subdivision shares those amenities out front rather than having the amenities in the rear like most other subdivisions.
I certainly am in favor of this, but is this one way in and one way out?
There's, there's a loop around parcel one. It's a, it's a divided entry with a entryway amenity, and then the road goes to two-way traffic and then splits into a one-way loop around the amenities that are in front of all the houses.
It's fully functioning at one hundred fifty ninth and the entrance?
Absolutely is.
It's a very interesting concept. That's kind of cool.
Well, it, it's something that planners have preached for years, that people need to be out front in the front yard sharing their amenities rather than having all of their activities in the rear.
No, I, I like it. It's interesting, and the way they've set it up, it's going to be pretty fair to everybody. You think, oh, I've got the first lot. Well, when you come in, it might be easy, but when you leave, you're going to have to go all the way around. So they're all going to, they are equally in the advantages and the disadvantages.
Sure, sure.
Les, are the seventy-foot lots, um, equal to the subdivisions around it?
They are similar-sized lots, yes.
What a square feet are those lots? Roughly? Square feet?
Eight thousand. I think Kay, Kaywood and Quell Crossing, I think their minimums are eighty-five hundred if I remember right.
And the house remains, obviously. Pleasure.
Chris Rose is here from Baughman Company. If you have any, any questions, he represents the applicant.
Greg, you were saying something?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the findings and factors and recommendation of the Andover Planning Commission to adopt an ordinance approving zoning case Z two thousand nineteen dash oh-three to create a planned unit development district and establish a prelim, preliminary planning unit development plan of the Summerlin addition.
Second. Motion by Greg, second by C.R., to approve zoning case two thousand nineteen zero three as presented. Further discussion.
Just out of curiosity, since the developer was here... Just out of curiosity, since the developer was here, and if it was in my material, I didn't catch it, but do they already have an idea of what the price range is going to be for the homes in there?
Maybe Chris can answer that question.
Chris Rose with Baughman Company, agent for the applicant. I believe they said that probably starting price is going to be 300,000, so.
Okay, I was thinking about downsizing, but maybe that won't be a downside.
I think their concept is mostly.
I like the concept.
Yeah, it's going to be more of a concept, but I think, you know, it's going to be more of a maintenance, I'm going to say maintenance area. It's a lower maintenance area because there's going to be more house on a little, maybe a little smaller lot, so there's not so much maintenance, but I think they were saying.
I'll still look forward to seeing it.
Okay.
Just not from the inside.
We had a first and a second. Any more questions? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 13, Prairie Creek Third Edition. Looks like we got a whole host of stuff to do here.
Mr. Mayor, you go from 13 to 15 on this one, and you're affecting the third, fourth, and fifth phase of Prairie Creek. You start with the third phase essentially amending your ordinances and work resolutions reflect the fact that you have a respread of special assessments, and that's the general purpose of item 13. And then 14, of course, you go into authorizing improvements in the area for the fourth phase, and 15 goes through the fifth phase. So it's our typical work ordinance resolution, accepting petitions, and I think we have a plat we're also starting with in the fourth and fifth phase. That correct, actually, Mrs. McCoslin prepared this item because we thought it was going to be on the last agenda, and I wasn't here prior to that meeting, so she could really give you an in-depth summary of what we're doing here.
I can redo this and move on it quickly if you go right.
Everyone's ready for that? Okay. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we, for item 13.1, that we accept the petition as presented.
Second. Motion by Troy, second by CR to approve the amended paving petition as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13.2, I make a motion that we approve the amended resolution of advisability related to 13th Street paving improvements for Prairie Creek Third Phase, and further authorize the method of assessment for such benefit district financing said improvements.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Brian to approve the resolution of advisability as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And for 13.3, I'd make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending ordinance 1669 of the City of Andover, Kansas, authorizing the reallocation of certain special assessments.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline to approve the amended ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For 13.4, I'd make a motion that we accept the petition for the amended stormwater drain as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Greg to approve the amended stormwater drain petition as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And for 13.5 regarding the amending resolution for stormwater, I'd make a motion to approve amended resolution 1705 as previously amended by resolution number 1712 related to stormwater improvements for Prairie Creek Third Phase, and further authorize the method of assessment for such benefit district financing said improvements.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Brian to approve the amended resolution as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And for 13.6 regarding amending ordinance stormwater, I'd make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending ordinance 1642 as previously amended by ordinance number 1655 of the City of Andover, Kansas, authorizing the reallocation of certain special assessments.
Second. Motion by Troy, second by Mike to approve the amended ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Prairie Creek Fourth Edition.
Somebody else like to take 14?
Oh, you are the one.
I'll go, okay. For number 14.1 regarding final PUD, I'd make a motion to accept the dedications for the Prairie Creek Fourth Phase Final Planned Unit Development Plan as approved by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Brian to approve the dedications as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For 14.2 regarding the developers' agreement, I'd make a motion that we approve the developers' agreement between the City of Andover and Prairie Creek Homes LLC related to Prairie Creek Fourth Edition located at 13th and Prairie Creek Road as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline to approve the developers' agreement as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And for 14.3 regarding petition for paving improvements, I'd make a motion to accept the petition for paving improvements for Prairie Creek Fourth Phase as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Greg to approve the paving petitions as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Regarding 14.4, petition for water improvements, I make a motion to accept the petition for water improvements for the Prairie Creek Fourth Phase as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Mike to approve the petitions as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For 14.5, petition for sanitary sewer improvements, I'd make a motion to accept the petition for sanitary sewer for the Prairie Creek Fourth Phase as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Brian to approve the sanitary sewer petitions as presented. Further discussion. Can't we do petitions all in one?
Man, why didn't you tell me?
It's not a resolution, and it's not an ordinance.
Yes, I was going to recommend on item 15 that you just lump all the petitions together.
Thanks. All right, regarding 14.6, I'd make a motion to approve the resolution of advisability related to water and sanitary sewer improvements and paving improvements for Prairie Creek Phase Four, and further authorize the method of assessment for such benefit district financing said improvements as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline to approve the resolution of advisability as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For 14.7, which is the work ordinance, I'd make a motion to approve the ordinance authorizing construction of improvements in Prairie Creek Phase Four, and further authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds and temporary notes for the purpose of financing such improvements.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Mike to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, so for.
Prairie Creek Fifth Edition.
For 15, it looks like the petitions are point three through point six, but one and two, then I would need to be on their own. Okay, then for 15.1 regarding the final PUD, I'd make a motion to accept the dedications for the Prairie Creek Fifth Phase Final Planned Unit Development Plan as approved by the Planning Commission as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by CR to approve the dedication of the final PUD as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Regarding 15.2, the developers' agreement, I'd make a motion to approve developers' agreement between the City of Andover and Prairie Creek Homes LLC related to Prairie Creek Fifth Edition located at 13th and Prairie Creek Road as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Greg to approve the developers' agreement as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 For items 15.3 through 15.6, which are petitions for paving improvements, sanitary sewer improvements, paving improvements against water improvements, I'd make a motion to approve all the petitions as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline to approve the, excuse me, the paving, the sanitary sewer, the more paving, and the water improvements for Prairie Creek Fifth Phase as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For 15.7, Resolution of Advisability 660022, I'd make a motion to approve resolution of advisability related to water and sanitary sewer improvements and paving and stormwater improvements for Prairie Creek Fifth Phase, and further authorize the method of assessment of such benefit district financing said improvements as presented.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by CR to approve the resolution of advisability as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For 15.8, Work Ordinance 660024, I'd make a motion to approve the ordinance authorizing construction of improvements in Prairie Creek Phase Five, and further authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds and temporary notes for the purpose of financing such improvements as presented.
Second.
Sorry.
Second.
Is that Greg?
Yeah.
Motion by Troy, second by Greg to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Prairie Creek reallocation of special assessments.
I'm sorry, I talked about this on item 14. That item was related to 13th Street in the assessments. This is the reallocation of special assessments that, as you'll recall, we had several assessments on unplanted lands. This is taking some of those off and putting them on to the fourth and fifth phase, and, well, do you still, you'll still have some on unplanted areas, but it's just a.
What percentage is left in?
I don't know.
This dollar amount, does anybody know that? That's left on the unplanted tract?
Right off, right.
How much are they moving, transferring from it, then?
Have to, I'd have to look at each individual one here to look at it.
Council, we've had this discussion. It's a little nerve-wracking to have assessments on an unplanted tract of land. It would caution us going into the future that we don't allow that anymore.
You've got it added up per lot.
I guess the real question is, do we have a letter of credit that would cover the remaining balance on that unplanted tract?
I don't think it.
Does it even apply to that?
It does apply to that, and when I release the letters of credit, you know, it's released based upon CFOs, so the letter of credit is from the first phase. That part of the letter of credit that covers the unplanted portion, I don't release that portion even if they have enough CFOs for the other part. I prorate it accordingly.
Okay, that makes sense.
Are you still waiting for an answer? Because JT looks like he's diligently looking through his notes here.
I don't know. I guess I'm just making a point. As long as we have a letter of credit that will cover the unplanted territory, I mean, you're saying it well, but it.
Well, remember, no letter of credit is.
No, it won't cover 100%. I understand that.
We drew once?
I mean, at least we're going in the right direction, removing some of the liability on that unplanted tract to create.
And I think it's the bulk of the unplatted is being spread to the fourth and fifth. I mean, it's based upon the number of square foot.
Right.
Square feet, so I think a lot of it is going on to the fourth and fifth.
But not all of it.
Not all of it, but.
Just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, I actually believe we've drawn on that letter of credit one time to make the payment on the unplatted tract, so it's already been diminished in that capacity for one payment. My recollection is that we're moving $61,000 of the paving improvements off of that unplatted tract to these other.
Leaving what?
Properties. I knew you were going to ask me that, and I.
I did a couple minutes ago.
And I know, and I have here a computation of what is moved, but I don't have a computation of what remains.
Can we get that to you at the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't think it should stop what we're doing here, but I'm just, I'm just, once again, making it clearly known that we should not allow special assessments on unplatted tracts of land. It's just a bad practice, I think, in my opinion, even though we have a letter of credit, which is good. I'm glad we did because we already drew on it, which I didn't know about. So hopefully we'll get through this neighborhood one step at a time, and we'll get the rest of it off that unplatted tract when he hopefully develops that. So 16.1, did somebody make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept petition requesting the reallocation of special assessments of unplatted property.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by Caroline to approve the reallocation of special assessments as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 16.2.
We ready for motion?
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept petition requesting the reallocation of special assessments of unplatted property.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by Brian to approve the reallocation as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 16.3.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance authorizing resprinting of special assessments levied to finance improvements benefiting the Prairie Creek Edition, and further authorizing the allocation of special assessments to other platted and unplatted lots within Prairie Creek Edition.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by CR to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck, Donna. That's just a nightmare.
I might just make one statement.
It's not the only subdivision we did this on.
I know, but it's just a nightmare of work.
Oh, any of our nightmares. Marketplace, Cornerstone, trust me, nightmare.
We have learned every issue on this subdivision. I don't know how many times. I hope we don't duplicate it sometime in the future.
And the applicant's yet again not present. All right.
Didn't that fall for him?
No. Item 17, 159th Street Project, Waterline Agreement with the City of Wichita.
You remember at the last meeting, you approved the bidding of water and sewer improvements for the 159th Street Road Project. The water improvements are relocation of 16-inch waterline along 159th from just north of Central Avenue up to about Terradyne Street. The majority of that work is actually the City of Wichita's waterline. Only the crossings belong to Andover, so this agreement just establishes that sharing of cost between the City of Wichita and the City of Andover. You notice there that our portion of the project is only about 10% the line shares is Wichita's work.
I like the 90-10 split.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agreement with the City of Wichita for cost sharing of improvements to the public water system on 159th Street from Central Avenue to the KTA Bridge.
Second.
Motion by Caroline, second by Brian to approve the agreement as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 18, Flint Hills National Sixth Edition.
Mr. Mayor, Steve Anderson, city engineer. This is a typical engineering agreement. We receive and approve for subdivision improvements. This pertains to Flint Hills National, the sixth phase, and it's limited to the water and sewer design and construction engineering. The fees will be assessed, and the dollar amount in motion are before you under recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the agreement with MKEC for engineering services for Flint Hills National Edition Phase Six in an amount not to exceed $117,696, and authorize the mayor to sign such agreement.
Second.
Motion by CR, second by Greg to approve the agreement for engineering services as presented. Further discussion.
I have a question. Les, is this the northeast portion of Flint Hills? Is that right? Is that what the, okay. And this is the last area, right?
Southwest 120 from Prairie Creek.
Okay.
It's the final phase.
The final phase, okay. All right, okay, that's all I have.
So we just get a bunch more homeowners aggravated with the dust, dirty road. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
We should have, we should have talked to them about doing something with the road. Yeah, I know, but. Yeah, I know, but... Do we still have petitions that are valid for one hundred twenty Street?
Well, I, I would leave that to bond counsel. They're pretty old, like twenty years old, so...
A little stale, or...
Those are outside the period in which I will give you a, a, uh, unqualified bond opinion for the purpose of any financing.
Are you trying to get...
So, they're not valid, is what you're saying?
I'm not saying they're not valid. I'm saying that they are not within a reasonable time enough to support the financing opinion I have to give.
That's just an opinion, right?
That's correct.
Are they planning a new entrance on that north side?
No, their only, uh, point of access is an emergency access onto one twenty Street.
Maintenance ax, okay.
All I'm saying is, you're adding more houses, more homes.
More dust.
More complaints about the dust coming from the gravel road. So, it's coming. Item eighteen, nineteen, excuse me, Central Park Shelter.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, as you're probably aware, with Phase Two of Yorktown, the alignment, which we did add a slide, it is actually not in your packet. If they want to go to the last slide, I believe in this item has a, shows the alignment of Yorktown along with the, um, existing shelter in the top right corner. And then, kinda towards the middle left of the map, you'll see the proposed location of this new shelter to be moved to or rebuilt with the sidewalk, attaching it to existing sidewalks and the proposed sidewalk with Phase Two of Yorktown. The cost to move it and the cost to construct new is, um, well, and these are estimates of the best, best estimates we had at time. We haven't, we don't have any engineering plans on any of, we do have a estimate, or actually a contract before you deny, for Unruh House Movers to move the shelter, but then we still have to do all the footing and the concrete work and attachment of the electrical. And we estimate the total cost of that to be in the neighborhood of, excuse me, um, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And then, if you, if counsel so choose to, instead of moving that structure to rebuild one, the cost of that, we estimate to be around thirty-eight thousand. The monies to move it would come from the one set sales tax be charged to the street project. Any monies to rebuild over that, our finance director has told me that would have to be come from a different fund, i.e. General Fund or Park Fund. Les and I talked about this a little bit, and we decided to bring it to you guys to get your thoughts. We didn't really have a full-on recommendation for this, because we could see opinions both ways.
So, if we tear it down, we're not required to rebuild it anywhere, right?
That is correct. I did check with, uh, our park superintendent, and he estimates it gets reserved about thirty to thirty-five times a year, obviously warmer season, it's more often, colder season less. And then, it does get used intermittently, but not reserved amongst that other times. But yes.
When I, when I read this item, I had the impression that you were recommending, uh, upgrading it and moving it, as opposed to tearing it down, not replacing it, or building a new facility.
I, I struggle with what to recommend on that, to be honest with you. I could see advantages of all three options. You know, obviously, counsel has its pleasure, what they choose to do, and you, obviously, you got three, as far as I can tell, three options. One is to move it. The other one is to tear it down and, and do something later or rebuild new.
What is your, I think he's asking, what's your recommendation? What would you do? You had to decide.
He's not saying, he's not recommending any...
Well, I mean...
He doesn't want to.
I guess, I, I mean, I, I don't have the historical knowledge to know if this structure has any special meaning to, from the Girl Scout days. It's probably one of the nicer structures we inherited from the Girl Scout structure. We have done some work to it, too. We put a new roof on it and done some upgrades to it. Structurally, it's pretty sound. There's a little wood right at the bottom. We would have to cut that off when we moved it and build some piers up.
Wouldn't we save ten thousand dollars and be able to use the sales tax money by moving it?
Yes. It would be cheaper to move it. A little bit, you know, a little, and, and, and if we decide to move it, we're under a little bit of a clock because of the expedition of the dirt work on Phase Two. So, we have, that's why we're kinda, didn't have a lot of the solid information for it, because we just didn't have the time to get it together before and present it to you.
How far is it going to be moved again?
Oh, I didn't measure that, but I'm gonna guess...
I can't quite tell on there.
Just shy of a quarter mile.
My, my experience with it is that it is a shelter that's used pretty regularly during the nice seasons, so I think it's a popular location for folks. Big events, I mean, I see big crowds there, so I like the idea of moving it. I think it is, I think it is well-used. I think you're going to get the ten thousand dollar savings by moving as opposed to rebuilding, but I guess my question would be, will you consider additional parking? Where it's located now, it does give a little bit of parking plus a long, you know, drive line where people can park when they get some of those bigger events going. Did you have any thoughts about that?
One of the things that they didn't label on the drawing was the expansion of the existing parking area that's down in that area today. Expand it out to where I, I think it was twelve spaces in that concrete parking area along the road, so, yes, we did think about parking.
I mean, I don't like to take up a lot of park for concrete, but yet, on the other hand, at least leaving areas, because some of our areas are gravelled or even grassed, that it's obvious that you can park there if it's not muddy. So, I just, I just wondered if there was some thought of that, because I do, where it is now, it is convenient, and they can line up along the roadside and et cetera. But I, I presume they could do the same going around the curve anyway.
And another thing that isn't shown on the sheet is that we will expand the parking area across Yorktown Parkway at the conference cabin.
Oh, that's right. That was discussed.
We'll more than double the parking space available there.
I sure would, okay.
I got one more question. Hang on, please. Uh, is there currently electrical or electrical outlets or lighting in this existing one?
There is a couple outlets, and it does have, uh, lighting in the ceiling.
Okay. And we would, we would still keep that, right?
Yes, we have electrical in this area that serves the conference cabin and the, we call it the dam house around here, the, the shelter that's on the lake.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we will move the large picnic shelter in Central Park, and, um, that, let's see, we'll move the existing structure and we ha, a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Unruh House Moving Incorporated of Mound Ridge, Kansas, in the amount of eight thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
But Caroline, second by Mike to, uh, move the existing structure. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, you're gonna come back to us with another cost estimate of what's gonna take to wire it and pour the foundations, and are we doing all that in-house?
No, we'll, we'll bring some back. We'll, the concrete work will be more than our, I'm anticipating more than our expenditure capability in staff, so we will bring, getting the estimate, we will contract with an engineer to get us a design so we can get a hard number to bring back to counsel.
Okay. Fair enough. Item twenty, budget presentations.
Mr. Mayor, as you recall, we're trying to break up all the departments into separate budget presentations, and I think Rick is going to give our utilities, uh, tonight, including storm water, well, obviously wastewater our biggest utility, but storm water and recycling and trash, and we're also gonna talk a little bit about our water fund, uh, that I, many of us probably aren't even aware exists, because we, we don't operate our own water system per se. We have billing done by the city of Wichita, and they do our maintenance, but we do own, uh, the internal apparatus, so I was gonna have them talk a little bit about that as well.
Mr. Mayor and counsel, I also have Brian Walls, our local work superintendent with us, and in case there's any particular questions that he may have. On this slide is our actuals along with our projected. As you'll notice, we don't have personnel in on here, so you don't have a twenty-twenty estimated yet, because it would, um, not look correct if you took that off of there. But that is your historical data on that, along with our budgeted twenty-nineteen on total expenditures. Then, on personnel expenditures, that is your historical along with your actual and then budgeted twenty-nineteen. Again, we do not have the twenty-twenty personnel done quite yet.
Rick, is the, the jump there because of certifications by the employees?
Uh, that would account for some of it. Obviously, you know, cost of living adjustments and so forth would too. Then, obviously, the budgeted versus the actual, we, we usually come in under our budgeted number on even, correct me if I'm wrong, Don, even on, on personnel, we... Yes, and then we, we did get rid of a seasonal position and do a half-year FTE in twenty-nineteen, um, for, uh, utility labor. As you may recall, we did some reorganization and locates have got moved down to the wastewater department, some other items, so we, uh...
What you're showing us is contractual expenditures, is there a difference?
I'm sorry. Let me go back then.
That's, okay, that...
And the explanation is, we've been offloading more personnel costs to the sewer fund, because we've decided that a little bit more work, or at least I decided in the last four years, being dedicated by staff needed to be charged back to the sewer fund to equalize expenses. That, to me, is ninety percent of that. Right, right, right.
So, what staff are you allocating expenses to?
We, uh, well, I...
Some people do billing?
Myself, uh, the, uh, Les, Donna, Jenny, uh, anybody who touches that and has to work with that, uh, personnel or anything else out of it. Steve, you know, we have several, several people beyond the seven, the six people, or five people obviously work down there, uh, who are involved in that. You know, that, when I came in, I thought, to me, we were drastically underdoing that. And I know, you know, why everybody has a different idea on that, but...
I'm not saying it's wrong.
Right, no, I'm just, uh, you know, right, right. I, I think it's worth noting, and, uh, that's for the personnel part of it. I would also say, we could get more into it, we've done some heavy transfers into the expand, the wastewater utility fund, uh, out of, uh, into the expansion fund, so, uh, that is why, a big, another reason why the overall budget has gone up there, too. So, Donna's been pretty aggressive on those.
On the personnel side, you also have to remember that their benefits get charged to their, since it's its own fund, their benefits are also, this is not only payroll, it's the insurance and retirement, it's all of that. And since we had budgeted, uh, ten percent increase in health insurance last year, that jumped it up, and we actually had a decrease, so that will come down from that.
That includes all you all, the percentage of that.
Correct.
Well, I just, you just wanna be careful. I'm, I'm not saying this is wrong, I just don't wanna dip too much in that utility if it's not, um...
Accurate?
If it's not accurate, yeah. I mean, obviously, you guys do a lot of work pertaining to that department. It just seems like that's a convenient source of funds. Utilities are supposed to support themselves.
We have done some time studies on some of the people that are involved in it, how much time they've spent, and that's how we calculated the allocations.
Fair enough.
Including that is also IT, because he also supports their computers, so...
Fair enough. Go ahead, Rick, sorry.
It's okay. And then, on contractual expenditures, you'll see we're, we're fairly, fairly flat, um, you jump between actual and eighteen and budgeted nineteen. Obviously, we budget higher than we spend. We don't wanna underbudget. Also, the actuals, uh, the budgeted and actuals are going up a little bit, because as the plant ages, we do have to bring some licensed technical people in to do some of the work on some of the facilities as things age. We had a lot of, uh, pumps and so forth, things go out, and it requires sometimes some, some staff to be brought in, and that comes out of the contractual. We can talk a little bit more about that when we get into the CIP at the end. And then, commodities stays relatively flat. I suspect when your actuals come in, they're gonna be closer to your twenty-eighteen. But comparing actuals to budgeted is somewhat, a little bit difficult at times when, you know, we, we obviously don't wanna go exceed our budget, and so we... Then, our capital outlay goes up and down, and I will tell you on this slide, and, and we added a slide in this presentation that's not in your packet, that, um, this one hundred ninety thousand was grabbed from, uh, previous budget year and, and on the twenty-twenty, so that is an error, it's actually, uh, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And we'll, we'll talk about that here shortly. But things at the wastewater plant, when we do things, tend to be pretty expensive. It's a, it's a, it is a plant, and it has some pretty expensive items in it, but, you know, I think in twenty-eighteen, it was, help me out here, Brian, what was our, a hundred thousand alone, so that would account for a lot of it. Then, we bought a backhoe that was...
General fund.
The fund of it, uh, because obviously, we have to provide utilities and roads and, and whatever, you know, like that as well, but, um, we, you know, we do have a plan that's, what it, the comp plan expires, what, in four years? Les?
Twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, all right, so just, just a few years. I mean, it's not that far, and, you know, there's, the only part of it of annexations that were proposed is basically south of Kellogg, um, and so it's pretty much that far southeast, you know, portion, you know, kinda like where I live, um, Harry and, and Andover Road area. And there are some properties that we've completely surrounded, two or three of them, at least by three or four sides around, and, um, you know, my opinion is if they, you know, right, they live in Andover, Kansas, why, on their address, why, you know, why are we not annexing them? Just because they're gonna cause a fit, you know? And there's, there's some pretty nice properties out there that could be enhancing our city with sales tax and, and property tax and, and things like that as well, so, uh, we do have properties out there that, uh, we can start looking at to bring in, and we just did bicentennial, which is great, and then the Phase Two is coming up soon. Is that right? So, um, and, you know, there's a handful that could just be done, you know, now, and so, we just don't want us just to set on things like that, and, and twenty years later, it's still sitting there, so...
I think I know the handful of properties you allude to.
Yes.
There's several. I think you have a monster fight on your hands.
I think so. There's probably two or three of those that are really large property owners, and some, you know, large, very expensive homes on them, some of them.
Yeah, but there's some that have, um, what we would consider non-conforming uses, horses and different things like that on the property that we don't allow in the city limits, but are allowed in the county, and, uh, I'd think they'd fight for their right to keep those uses.
Couldn't, couldn't we make some exceptions to people like that?
It could come in as a non-conforming use, but...
And, you know, and, and then, you know, and there's probably one that you're thinking of that I am as well. I, I won't name it, but, uh, you know, those people who have fought for those, their, their property rights, which I agree with, you know, they, they've lived there for a long time, they have large properties, and, um, you know, we would like to encourage them to be part of our city.
I've tried.
You know? I know, yeah, so, but, uh, those, that's just one thing that I've been thinking about for a while, is, you know, we, we keep growing north, um, we're edging, but not very fast to the east, and we filled up our, um, our areas according to the comp plan, east and north already, but we haven't to the south and to the southeast, so...
I agree, I would agree with your, with your sentiments, but I think we need to start and look, as you allude to, to, to the pockets. I think the, 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 the annexation to the east and south and the north, that'll come as those properties develop.
Yes.
Because they're gonna want utilities from us. But if we have any remaining parcels that are inside of the... But if we have any remaining parcels that are inside of the city limits, surrounded on three sides or four sides by city limits, those are the ones that they need to take a stronger look at.
Yes.
Whether or not we need the county's approval or not, which we will on some of them, I know that.
Right.
Those are the properties you need to be concerned with, in my opinion, now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we've... We've taken great steps for that. We've cleaned up a lot of them.
And we're preparing a map now that identifies all of those properties within the comprehensive plan growth area that we could unilaterally annex. Those that are under twenty-one acres or they're platted. And there are a handful of properties that are probably great candidates for annexation unilaterally.
Yep. Well, thank y'all. Uh, one last thing. Um, on May the fourth, instead of me wearing my Star Wars shirt all day, which I normally do, um, I was actually wearing something a little bit different, which was a fire hat helmet. So this was, uh, Brian and Mark also was part of this, and this was the Wichita, um, uh, Fire Ops 101 class, which was, uh, pretty tough. Um, there were... There was a couple times I, you know, I was in the middle of a... A room that was smoking and fire over your head, and, um, I was kind of ready to get out, you know? So, uh, I'm, you know, uh, thank you to the fire department for, you know, you know, encouraging us to, you know, get a taste. Not the hundred percent, but just a taste of what y'all do, um, especially in extreme conditions. Um, you know, my group that I was with, we started up cutting cars, and it was kind of cool, you know, to take, you know, equipment, and I never realized how heavy those things are, but, uh, they're extremely heavy. And so we got to, you know, you know, take doors and roofs off of vehicles and... And then do CPR for forty-five minutes straight. Um, and, uh, if you don't think that's exhausting, uh, well, I mean, we were sweating, and, I mean, your sweat was just pouring off, you know, as you're doing this non-stop. So that was kind of cool. And, uh, the burn building that we were in, that, you know, we had to, you know, crawl through on our knees and, uh, to the fire with someone holding the... The, um, the extinguisher behind you and the rope and, um, and, uh, you know, it was hot, you know, but it wasn't nearly as hot as what these guys have to, you know, do, you know, when they go into a fire. Um, but, um, it, you know, I think we got some pretty cool videos and... And pictures, and a lot of those, they, you know, that was on cake and Channel Twelve last week and, uh, last Saturday and Sunday, I think even Monday, it was on cake on there, too. Um, one cool thing was that one of the guys that was with me was a cake reporter, so he was right behind me with a GoPro on top of his helmet. So it was really cool. So I have... I have... He did send me that video, so if any of y'all would like to see it, you know, I'll share it with you. And then the really... I mean, that was really, you know, frightening to go into that burn building. But what was even more scary to me was going into the search and rescue, uh, trailer when you had zero visibility and no flashlight. I mean, you know, of course, they take flashlights with you when you go into those, but realistically, how far does it, you know, show? Maybe a foot, you know, at times? You know, so you have to, uh, be able to search, and we had to bring dummies out of this, and, um, you know, my group, uh, we got two with a three out. But I think there's only one group out of all the four groups that actually brought all three survivors out. Um, but, uh, it was really difficult to do that, and I hope that if any one of you have an opportunity to do this next year or a year after, uh, please, uh, sign up and try it. It was pretty exciting.
If I may, sir, um, we were very excited at the opportunity to be able to participate in that with our brothers, uh, in the Wichita Fire Department, and incredibly excited that we had, uh, our city staff, uh, and city, um, leaders be able to take a part of that. And you all represented very well, I am told, so kudos. And you can use that later if you need to. I'll set you up.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, there... There were a few, I guess, a handful of people that couldn't complete the program. Uh, there was nothing easy about this. Um, I mean, they pushed us, the... We all had, you know, team leaders that was assigned to each one of us. Uh, then there was a group leader, and there was, I mean, he pushed you. I mean, he was a drill sergeant and made you do it. Uh, and obviously, if you couldn't do it, I mean, you know, that was very understandable, but they wanted us to, you know, taste of what... What really goes on. And, uh, you know, when you're, you know, and one... One cool thing was they did have the Salvation Army that was there. They provided dinner, uh, I mean, lunch for us, and... And Red Cross was there taking our blood pressure and stuff, making sure that our, you know, heart rates and stuff weren't too crazy coming out of the burn buildings. So, um, it was pretty cool to, you know, put the whole entire gear on and feel how heavy, you know, the, uh, the oxygen packs are. And then, you know, you know, you know, taking in the, uh, the fire line, I mean, that's... That's no... That's not easy as well, so, um, it was a really cool experience. Thank you.
Steph, have anything else?
So I don't want to prolong this any, but we did come up with the fact there's still six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and, uh, six hundred... Six hundred and forty-six thousand six seventy in Prairie Creek, uh, unplanted land. So we took about eighty thousand off of what the previous total of seven twenty... Seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand. You know, they've got seven more phases to go, and I assume relatively proportionally, over the next seven phases, uh, this will all get allocated. But, you know, for now, we're not... Not even quite halfway through this, but, uh, you know, it's going down, but sure... Surely not as fast as we'd like it to.
All righty. I have a question on that real quick.
Sure.
Ben or whoever. So when... If we were... If they were to take all of the... The cost of all utilities upfront, um, would they still have the ability to, uh, sell the home or the lot with a special on it? That would be paid through the taxes to recover?
You're talking about the developer?
Yeah.
No. They would just... They would pay those costs. The developers don't have a way to assess the property. Only... Only the... Only the county can.
So really, they would just have to increase the lot price?
Right. And that's the way it works around ninety-five... Ninety-eight percent of the nation, rest of the nation. Developer bears all the costs of the infrastructure, your paving, your sewer, your stormwater.
And they just put into the lot.
And they just add it to the price of the lot.
Which is appropriate.
Yes.
The homeowner pays for it either way, but, um...
But then the city's not on the hook.
Yeah.
Basically, what you're ending up doing is you're allowing the smaller developers more work. Uh, but, you know, do you really want some of those that are barely a developer to be able to do this work versus someone who can afford to come in and do all of it? You know, which...
Sustain the improvements until the lots are...
Yeah, but, you know, ninety-five percent of the country, like, you know, Mayor said, does that already, you know, except for certain areas around us.
The reason why we do it is because Wichita doesn't.
Yep.
And we have to do it, but it... And, yeah. There are instances when a smaller developer can't afford to know.
Mm-hmm.
But we have assurances in place. Anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
This has been fun, but I will second.
A motion by Troy and a second by Caroline. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are...